Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. And I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for August 6, 2019, to order. And the first item of the agenda is the roll call.
Coon?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Note for the record, Fazard is absent.
Okay. The next item is comments from the citizens present. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. And Bill Burns is going to keep track of the time, so he will let you know when there's a 90 seconds left and then when there's a 30 seconds left. So we're going to start with Abby Atun.
Hello. Abby Atun, Director of Planning and Community Development. I just wanted to provide you with a quick update that Mark Opitz and I breathed a huge sigh of relief last Wednesday morning at about 8:00, when our two new employees in our department started. And I just wanted to introduce them to the city council and also to the residents who are present here tonight. Kelly Hilliard. Kelly, if you could just stand up so everybody knows who you are. Kelly Hilliard is the city's new Sustainability Coordinator. Kelly lives here in Middleton and has served on the Conservancy Lands Commission. She has a master's degree in landscape architecture and has most recently been working for the Wisconsin Academy as a program assistant for the Academy's Climate and Energy Initiative. She has 20 years' experience working in sustainability as a landscape architect, an organic farmer, and as a lead AP+ project manager for green building projects. And then Daphne Shu is the city's new associate planner. And Daphne moved here from Southern California. She recently completed her master's degree in planning. And prior to that, she got a bachelor's degree in global studies, environmental sustainability, and French from Urbana-Champaign in Illinois. Daphne has held internships, including one with the city of Peoria, Illinois, and also with the Southern California Association of Governments, which I believe is the largest regional planning agency in the United States. Both Daphne and Kelly are hitting the ground running with several projects. Kelly is working on managing the OEI grant project, and Daphne is working on applying for a Madison Community Foundation grant that could provide seed funding for programming at the downtown plaza. So I just wanted to welcome our two new employees. Thank you.
Let's give a big warm welcome. Now, we have a lot more chairs up here, so if you... So let's move some of those chairs on the other side, too, if we could, so everybody has a place to sit. Or they could be moved forward up here, too, so... Okay, so the next speaker is Elder Susan West. She's going to talk about lakes and watershed budget.
Okay. As I think most of you know, I serve on the Dane County Lakes and Watershed Commission. Can you hear me?
No.
Maybe put that in.
Can you speak in your microphone? Just bring it toward your mouth.
I've got the short one. Okay. I serve on the Dane County Lakes and Watershed Commission, and they, at the last meeting, put together their budget recommendations to be sent to County Executive Joe Perici and the county board. And I had asked that they include in the recommendations, and it was approved unanimously by the committee, to include looking at the purchase of lands in the town of Springfield. I think we've heard, you've probably heard of it, is the Three Pond Study for infiltration to remove phosphorus and some reduction in stormwater. So I was really pleased that that got included in the recommendation, and I would encourage everyone to contact our county board supervisors and the county execs so that we can get this funded.
Well, that's really a great job. Let's go with Susan, another big hand here. Yeah, we have a lot of flood damage, and, you know, doesn't matter how much the rains are, we would like that even if we have the same amount of rain, we have no damage. So I think if we do some of these things, that would happen. At least, that would minimize that, so... Okay, so the next one is Leslie Hayner. Three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Leslie Hayner, Town of Springfield, co-leader of the Middleton Area Good Neighbors. You've heard a lot of fiction about AMPAC meetings, but I'm here tonight to share facts that you have not yet heard. Jade Hofelt, an appointed member of the AMPAC and owner and CEO of Capital Flight LLC, previously told the AMPAC panel that she helped with the distribution of the second user survey, excuse me. Sorry, I thought I was going to cough. Which is problematic because a stakeholder who has no contract with BOA, the city, or the consultant should not be working directly with the taxpayer-paid consultant to do any part of his work. Jade has claimed at the AMPAC and in emails with the mayor that the sole source of the survey distribution was JetNet, a for-profit database of commercial and business pilots. That claim was false. At the last AMPAC, Ms. Hofelt feigned ignorance of the contents of the survey. The truth is that she did not just help with the distribution of the second potential user survey, she authored the questions and provided them via Mr. Opitz, along with a gerrymandered distribution list to Greg Stern from Mead and Hunt. This manipulated distribution list elicited padded and false data to present to the public, her own committee, the Airport Commission, your council, to show potential user demand to support this expansion. In a September 16, 2018 email to Mr. Opitz and Mr. Stern, Ms. Hofelt writes, quote, "As discussed, some of these aircraft may not qualify as candidates to fly into C-29 either now or with a runway extension. However, you never know if the operator may own other aircraft or simply may be willing to help out with the survey. It was Matt and my thought that people can easily delete an email if they aren't interested in participating, however they may just get and understand what we are trying to do and be willing to fill out a shorter five-question survey which may help our cause." Unquote. Further, in that email, she proposes the five questions and the introductory remarks that would later become Survey Two. About that data, the survey got 81 responses. A closer look at the responses showed 39 of the 81, fully half, did not come from the source that she represented to the AMPAC, the public, or the mayor as being the sole source of her data for the survey. But rather, those 39 were herself, her husband, her husband's father, a number of their close business associates, followers on social media, and multiple people who are already hangar tenants at C-29, therefore not potential users from JetNet, and people who had no business taking a potential user survey. Jade was not honest with anyone about her role in the second survey. It is beyond shocking that a city employee, Mr. Opitz, and a consultant being paid a quarter of a million dollars of our taxpayer money would participate in that farce. At the July 11 Airport Commission meeting, Matt Hofelt pitched an expansion of their business at Maury. He stated that their company netted $4 million last year. Apparently, that's not enough. I don't begrudge anyone a living, and if somebody legitimately earns $4 million, I applaud him or her. But when someone cheats and harms others to get it, I have no respect for that. They want more, they want us to pay for it, they want us to sacrifice our health and safety, our peaceful enjoyment of our lives, the ability of our children to peacefully learn in their schools, and our property values so that they can get more, and it's all predicated on false data. I asked the council tonight to reject the resolution to protect her and instead make a motion to remove Jade Hofelt from the AMPAC. With the evidence of her unethical and inappropriate behavior, I have presented here tonight, she has shown that she is not suitable to serve on that committee. Her presence is already undermining public trust. I cannot see how her fellow committee members will want to put their reputations on the line next to someone who has created and manipulated the very data that is being presented to them to make their decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kyle Larson.
I'm Kyle Larson, Town of Springfield. I'm helping Leslie with the Middleton Area Good Neighbors. And we've been accused of being a small but vocal minority, and I object to that. We're no minority, and I think the council knows that. The resolution tonight is proving that the citizen, or that the city, has an agenda and that it's prepared to aggressively pursue it, regardless of whether the citizens or even the local businesses need or want it. It's an agenda to further the economic development of a tiny subsection of business. To claim that there is no agenda for expansion is empirically false. The purpose of a master plan is to aid in development, period. Middleton prides itself on being a good neighbor city with progressive values and being, quote, "a vital commercial and business center," end quote. That vitality is directly linked to your residents. They are the lifeblood behind any kind of business and any economic success for the city. Openness and transparency in local government are essential for a strong community. This is sorely lacking in this endeavor. By desiring to exclude public opinion and declare conflicts of interest are no matter in an advisory body, you're directly saying that you prefer to go about your agenda in the shadows. You have a responsibility to ensure the free flow of ideas and discussions, and you must be objective, especially when confronted with evidence that challenges your views or positions. The AMPAC was created to absorb information, to make recommendations based on what they've learned. You've heard their recommendation about the necessity of a citizen's survey before development is considered, and you're attempting to aggressively ignore that advice. But while we're talking about the AMPAC, I would like to follow up with what Ms. Hayner just said. Conflicts of interest exist when someone who represents the city has a special opportunity for financial reward. Capital Flight, the Maury Airport Company, and the MACC all have direct financial benefits as a result of their role in advising the city of Middleton. Rules against such conflicts of interest exist to reinforce the public's confidence that the city leaders are acting in the public's best interest and not to further their own self-interest. We've already seen proof that Ms. Hofelt has been acting to further her own interests in conjunction with at least one city official. She was able to use public resources, the city's contracted engineering firm, to advance her own personal agenda. Where a private interest has in fact compromised the proper performance of a public official's duty, that specific situation is better regarded as an instance of misconduct or abuse of office, or even an instance of corruption, rather than a conflict of interest. Do you want your names associated with a decision that endorses this type of behavior? Do you want your constituents to know that you value your agenda over their voices? Do you want to read about yourselves in the press as someone who actively participates in stifling the voices of your residents and condoning abuses of power? I encourage you to vote this measure down. And I join with Ms. Hayner's voice that Ms. Hofelt is unsuitable for service as an appointed member of the AMPAC. There is clear evidence that she coordinated with a city employee to manipulate data, lie to her fellow AMPAC members, and the city. I call on you to make a motion to remove her from the AMPAC.
Thank you. So the next one is Bob Bartolomew.
I'm going to focus on definitions. In the 1998-99 resolution, it states when and if there is a need to make improvements. Well, to extend a runway or more is a major change, or an alteration. An improvement would be more take care of the drainage. In the Code of Ethics, conflict of interest ad hoc committee exception, it reads, "Charged with a narrow responsibility of addressing specific issue or topic. A 20-year master plan is not a topic. It's a comprehensive planning document regarding the largest entity in Middleton, affecting public health, wetlands, economy, and more. There are separate topics, each worthy of individual attention. Narrow responsibility does not describe the broad scope of the committee's responsibilities, which are extensive. The designation topic in the master plan document is a misnomer. Therefore, the ad hoc exception should not apply to the Airport Master Planning Advisory Committee. A specific resolution contains the phrase, 'Without significantly changing the mix of small aircraft,' there needs to be specific translation of significantly and small in this context. The advisory committee is signed up as volunteering their time to construct an incredible master plan and reviewing evidence,' I'm going to state, 'evidence,' and debating that end. There needs to... This needs to continue as it has been doing, because that's what they have been doing. So I urge a no vote on the resolution so that the committee can continue to do their very important work."
Thank you, Bob. So that next one is Joe McDonough.
McDonald.
McDonough?
My name is Joe McDonough. I'm a pilot of the Middleton Airport, hangar owner there, and also a city of Middleton resident. I'm just here to speak in support of the resolution tonight. I feel it is very important to continue the airport master planning process and to clarify the roles of... Excuse me. The role of AMPAC. The city cannot adequately assess whether or not the airport meets the needs of the community without an updated master plan. And more importantly, the airport is an important asset to the city. It is important to current leaseholders, but also to med flight, stormwater management, and community events. The master planning process must be completed to yield a current airport layout plan. Without a current airport layout plan, federal funding will be in jeopardy. Whether or not the airport expands, federal funding is crucial to maintain the airport, especially as the infrastructure continues to age. So please support the resolution and allow the master planning process to continue to completion so the airport can be a healthy community asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So the next one is David Arndt.
My name is David Arndt, and I reside at 4714 Capital View Road, which is the city of Middleton. And my wife and I purchased this property in 1998 and have lived there the last 21 years. It has been our dream home, and we stand to be affected very much by the airport expansion of the runway. Here mainly to address the negation of the AMPAC resolution to conduct another survey. And as I expressed in an email to you all yesterday, we oppose this negation and would hope that the council will do the right thing for the city and its constituents and move forward with the new survey resolution. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, David. So the next one is Susan Arndt.
You just heard from my husband, David Arndt. We live on 4714 Capital View Road, city of Middleton. We are not Town of Middleton residents. And we are very affected by anything that happens with the runway. We have been in the last expansion, that we had to have an airway space above our trees, and they wanted us to take out all of the oaks there that have been there for, you know, hundreds of years. And so we had to work out a different way of dealing with that, rather than just wiping them out. The difficulty being, as I have seen one of the maps, there's a large area that's in red, south of the new runway, that looks like that's going to be purchased. Now, if that is the case, I am very disappointed that this body did not contact us specifically, because that looks like a fairly large piece of land. And to make that happen, and to allow that to happen, and to make some agreement, takes time. And I am also just disappointed that residents were not notified, rather than waiting until all the plans are made and we're stuck with whatever has been planned, rather than being able to give our input ahead of time. And that's very uncomfortable, because we've already gone through this. And after we did that, we were told they were not going to expand anymore, so we didn't have to worry about that. And it's been 10 years, however. Here we are again. Thank you.
So, excuse me. Which land is being purchased? Does anybody know?
I don't think we're purchasing anything.
We didn't. We haven't voted on it.
Yeah, where the runway goes through.
Okay, but we are not buying anything right now, so...
I know, but at some point, if you go do this runway and you have to have, you know, a wider runway would require a wider area for flyover.
It's called a runway protection.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, and...
It spans quite far into the land that's not owned by the city.
Yeah. And so, not having been notified that that was a possibility, and taking away a large portion of our land would be, is very uncomfortable. Thank you for your...
Thank you, Susan. Really appreciate that. So the next one is Rio Charlie Brent.
Reverend.
Oh, Reverend Char... Well, I apologize, Reverend.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Yeah. Well, I did consult with this gentleman here, so I guess, anyway, thank you, Reverend.
I'm here to speak not about the airport, but about another item on the agenda in terms of Cross Lutheran Church. And just to give you a little background, Cross has been worshiping in the Bishop's Bay Clubhouse for over three years. There's about 120 members to the church. About 25 are here tonight. And what we are coming is to ask the council to help us come up with a way so that we can stay in Middleton, in the Bishop's Bay development. What we're looking for is a way to build. We have gone to the zoning between Westport and Middleton meetings. We've gone to the planning committee, and they recommended we come here, so that's why we're here. And we are currently worshiping in the clubhouse, I mentioned that. The room is about half the size of this room, and we have already had to go to two services, and parking is far away, and we're just looking for an identity. We are like a family of four living in a studio apartment. And we are small, and we're looking for the chance to grow, and have a school and a church, and grow into that community and Middleton. Yes?
Can your visitors raise their hands so I can see the 25? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, so the next one is Robert Conheim.
I'm Rob Conheim, a former member of the city council and a former member of the Airport Commission, of which I was a member for about 20 years. I should add that I do not own an airplane, and although I did get my pilot's license in high school, but I haven't flown for about 30 years. I'm here to address the resolution that's before the council, near the end of its agenda, about the role of AMPAC in the airport planning process. When I was a member of the Airport Commission, more than a year ago, Mead and Hunt was tasked with the idea of updating the airport master plan. That was to be a three-part process. One was to get data from current and potential future users of the airport, what they would like to see the airport become. Two was Mead and Hunt to develop a specific plan based on that input from current and future airport users. And three, to present that plan to the public for comment, to see what the public thought about these ideas. Unfortunately, AMPAC was convened before Mead and Hunt was able to develop a specific plan regarding what the future users of the airport would like to see. I'm a little concerned that many of the opinions that you have are based on maybe information that somehow has become skewed. For example, that Jade Hofelt somehow has a conflict of interest. For pilots to have a conflict of interest on the airport master planning process is a little like saying drivers have a conflict of interest when they give the Department of Transportation advice on how to improve the freeway. They say, oh, it's all about money. I would like to point out that there are roughly 5,000 airports in the U.S. that have paved runways. About 10% of those are served by the airlines, sometimes maybe only a few times a week. Now, one of the advantages of this airport is because it's on the west side, and it does not serve airliners. No airliners are going to fly in there. There has been lots of discussion about lengthening the runway, as if somehow that's going to result in bigger airplanes coming to the airport. But one of the concerns that pilots have expressed is landing on that runway in the wintertime, when the braking action can be marginal to poor. What they really worry about is going off the end of that runway because of its length. Now, I'm sure you know that there are other smaller airports in the state that have 5,000-foot runways, for example. Middleton's is currently 4,000 feet. Dane County's is 9,000 feet. So to give you some perspective, I would like the council to approve this resolution. I would like to point out that it's... Because you're a pilot doesn't automatically disqualify you from being on this committee. And I would also like to see the committee withhold its judgment until they've had a chance to respond to the specific plans being presented by Mead and Hunt. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. So the next one is Fred Clansnick.
Clansnick.
Clansnick. I apologize if I butchered your name. Mine is butchered every single day, so...
You did quite well.
Clansnick, yes.
So my name is Fred Clansnick. I am a resident of Middleton for the last 15 years. I live at 3315 Glacier Ridge Road over in Middleton Hills, and we have had a lot of talk about this among the neighbors. I had written an email to the mayor and our alder.
Actually, I would say excellent email, very well explained.
Thank you. And I won't read it word for word, but I'll kind of paraphrase what it says. My background is in master planning and civil engineering. I ran a firm that's nationally recognized for master planning, civil engineering of very large municipal projects that are high visibility and typically attract this number of people, if not double that. So what I'd like to talk a little bit about is the planning process, and we heard one point of view. I think on a project like this, the process needs to be very interactive, and I think Mead and Hunt has put together a good process with Mark Opitz. We're at a point now where the group that was put together as an advisory committee has unanimously recommended that a community survey be done now, so that the consultant can use the results of that community survey in coming up with their alternatives for the airport future. The resolution that you have in front of you is saying that the city would like to wait until after the master plan is completed to do that community survey. Now, in my opinion, based on my experience, I would get that input early. I would have these types of public interaction meetings, just as you have been doing and as you are doing tonight, frequently, at least four times during the project. And the next one would be somewhere around the time where alternatives, the scenarios for alternatives are being discussed. And so that's really what the basic difference is between what the resolution said from the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee a couple weeks ago and the one that you have in front of you. So I'm recommending you vote no to this resolution tonight. Allow this public process to continue. Get that community input, and then put together the alternatives. Have another meeting. Come out of that alternative process with a preferred, maybe a consensus direction for the master plan. Come back to the public again. Show it to the public. Go out for one more survey, and then do your implementation plan. I think the idea that you can do this with one master plan is probably not a good approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Great job. Thank you, Susan. The next one is Cynthia Richson.
Good evening, everyone. Ooh, creaky. My name is Cynthia Richson. I am a member of the Maury Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee and also the Airport Commission. I am, in addition, the town board chair for Town of Middleton. However, tonight I'm speaking on my own individual behalf regarding Resolution 201931 regarding Maury Airport. As the December 1998 resolution states, "The city council promised the citizens that Maury Airport would not be expanded. Over the years since 1998, a large number of people have relied on that promise and have invested substantial funds based on that reliance." Resolution 201931 suggests this council wishes to ignore the 1998 promise and proceed with a... and proceed with a master plan for expansion of Maury Airport. The Maury Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee was formed to respond to various alternatives for airport expansion with the assistance of Meaden Hunt. To respond in any meaningful way, the committee must consider and weigh all the pros and cons of each expansion alternative. This requires investigating all the ramifications of each proposed change. The purpose of Ethics and Conflicts of Interest laws is to prevent self-dealing, undue influence, and bias to preserve public confidence in local government. This requires committee members that do not have conflicts of interest. The members of the committee are public officials as defined in the city's ethics code. Yes, the airport committee members are advisory-only, just like the Airport Commission and every, many, many other municipal committees and commissions. The primary responsibility of commissions and committees is to advise and make recommendations to the common council to consider as part of its decision-making. The airport committee members are subject to the city ethics code, which provides "Conflicts of Interest: Financial and Personal Interests Prohibited." And the remedy is to first disclose the conflict of interest, but also to not, I'm quoting, "not participate in debate or discussion," and to also, most importantly, "not vote on the matter." However, the city created an ad hoc committee exception to this conflict of interest prohibition, quote, "where an individual serves on a committee charged with a narrow responsibility of addressing a specific issue or topic." This narrow exception does not apply here, as the airport master plan project has morphed from a thirty thousand dollar budget item in 2016 for a micro master plan into a comprehensive master plan with a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar contract with Meaden Hunt. The cost of airport expansion will be in the millions of dollars. There are three airport committee members with direct financial conflicts of interest who should not be serving as voting members of the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee. I respectfully request that in order to promote public trust and confidence in the City of Middleton Common Council, so that citizens can confidently rely on a promise made to the city, whether in nineteen ninety-eight or right now, that the common council not enter into Resolution 2019-31. Thank you.
Yes, Sven Krause. Yeah, please, go ahead and...
A microphone.
Come to the mic. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Sven Krause, Town of Springfield. Um, I just want to state that, uh, I was initially gonna, in the aspect of time passed, just given everything that's been said so well, I think the opposition is, uh, one-hundred percent right in this, uh, as a, despite living on the outskirts of Middleton and in the, off of County Highway K, I see numerous planes well below the five-hundred-foot FAA limit, uh, creating safety hazards, noise concerns from five AM till eleven PM, at eleven PM, midnight at times. Um, I think City of Middleton right now has an identity crisis, going through whether it wants to be a lesser-dense piece of Madison to incorporate apartments and sort of that urban living, or whether it wants to coexist between single-family houses and agriculture, or whether it wants to become now a large commercial airport, and I frankly, um, strongly oppose the latter of that, so, that's all I'll say.
Thank you so much. So, the next one is Steve Waldorf.
Steve Waldorf, Town of Middleton. Um, residents should have been surveyed before the planning process was initiated. Getting a survey at the end of the process makes no sense. If the majority of residents do not want this expansion, then why waste more money planning it? Since you're proceeding, proceeding in the process without public input, one can only assume that the ulterior motives are at work. Who is going to benefit from the airport? We already heard one answer is the pilots, who's a minority of the population. We have since learned that the pilot survey which was conducted was flawed, included many pilots who live out of the state. Why would you give more leverage to a minority populace that doesn't even reside within our immediate community? I, we've also heard tonight, who else are going to benefit from this, which is rather disturbing? AMPAC was tasked to advise the City Council on this matter. The fact that you're discounting their information-gathering advice is alarming, because it means that you want to push this expansion without any input from the community. There's a strong opposition to this airport expansion by the community. Surely you have heard this. Why are you ignoring your constituents? Don't believe me? Then send out a citizen survey before the master plan is completed. You will see that people are happy with the size of the airport as it now stands, and you not want expansion.
Next one is Deb Newman.
My name is Deb Newman, Town of Springfield. I am here to oppose the resolution regarding the airport master plan process. Regarding Resolution Four, I'm disappointed that the city is content with gathering public concerns and comments so late in the process. In a similar project, right now, Pheasant Branch Conservancy, the public is invited to complete a survey that can be found on your website. It states, "You have an opportunity for residents to provide input and feedback on this process. A public meeting was held six-twenty, and other public input opportunities will be made available in the future." There seem to be many chances to participate here in the planning, uh, planning future of the conservancy, but this has not been our experience in the airport master plan process. And this is, this is a project that poses safety, health, and quality of life risks, and I'm not being dramatic, and I'm not fear-mongering, but with that statement. This resolution appears to many of us to be an attempt to limit our voices and possibly control the outcome of this process. All we want is a voice. Technically, because an airport expansion would affect citizens in the Town of Middleton and the Town of Springfield, our represent-- our representation is not through you. It is through our represent-- our representatives on AMPAC. They speak and question on our behalf. I attended the last meeting. There were pointed, reasonable questions. Clarification was sought, and fact-based data was presented during the public comment. I didn't think it was contentious. I do not expect my representatives to sit on AMPAC and listen passively to presentations. I want them to ask tough questions, think critically, and work to sort out the complex issues posed by an airport expansion. In my mind, asking for a special meeting time focused on public safety and noise is a must. Restricting their roles through this resolution is a mistake. I see the second resolution holds up the importance of sticking to the timeline. However, from the AMPAC meeting minutes dated June sixth, in a conversation between Mr. Bartholomew and Mr. Opitz, it was stated, "There is no deadline for completing the master plan. There is flexibility to adjust the schedule template originally outlined by the consultant." So, I would vote for an open, inclusive, honest process, even if the timeline needs to be tweaked. Finally, though, the group of concerned citizens has been maligned, and even some committee members on the AMPAC, truly, we just want a voice in this process. We want to share our experiences living in close proximity to the airport as it is. We want to share our fact-based information and data that we've collected on the expansion. We want to share our real concerns that our quality of life will be impacted.
That's time.
And in this process, this process, we want more than just this little dot. Thank you.
Thank you, one is, next one is Ann Olson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Ann Olson. I reside at eight-nine-one-six White Coral Way. I live in the Hidden Oaks neighborhood, which is very close in proximity to the airport. Um, I just wanted to point out something that hasn't been mentioned here, which was the, the May nine open house, which I attended, that was put on by Meaden Hunt. Um, I found that that open house was a sort of a, um, misrepresented opportunity for communication about this project. Um, public interaction was not sought at that meeting. Um, information was not presented at that meeting in a cohesive fashion, and discussion was frankly, um, not allowed, um, among the entire group that was present. There were over a hundred people there, and it was really quite a letdown. Um, I think that waiting to collect public feedback on this planning process is like baking a cake and then asking people what flavor they want. Um, I also am concerned about, um, the fact that support for this is coming from some private entities that are not residents of Middleton. Um, and personally, within my neighborhood, there is very little, um, there is very, a lot of frustration that people have not been, uh, informed about the process or given an opportunity. I'd like to see a public survey, um, done right away, and again, at the end of the process to see if things were done right. I, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. I, at the same time, I also am not totally opposed to some reasonable expansion. I know that the hangar expansions has been something that's been discussed. Um, I think some of these proposals are very reasonable, but I would like to see the plans put out and the public feedback gathered, taken seriously, and responded to. I just wanted to point out that the FAQ document that was so often referred to at this open house has not been updated since May seven. Um, that doesn't look like a lot of public information to me.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ann. So, the next one is Joan Ziegler.
Hello, my name is Joan Ziegler. I live at forty-seven ninety-seven Capital View Road in the Town of Middleton. And, um, yes, I've been involved in this process for many years. We've lived there for over thirty-five years. This is the second time that we've been through the planning process. The first planning process promised that the runway would never be expanded, that jets would never land at Maury Airport. Well, we all know jets land there, and now we're talking about expanding the airport. And I heard, didn't personally hear, that somebody said, "Well, that promise is old, it doesn't count." I think that as leadership for our communities, that your promises do count, that they should not have a time limit on them or a lapse, that they should be held up as something of honor to stand behind. I think that public input is critical in making decisions that affect the community, and the community is broader than the business owners and the pilots that fly at Maury Airport. Why it would be only user-based, the input, is beyond my comprehension. Thank you for your time.
So, the next one is Jerry Luedtke. Jerry Luedtke.
It is Jerry.
It is Jerry. Do we have Jerry Luedtke? Okay, thank you. The next one is Steve Ziegler.
Thank you. Steve Ziegler, Capital View Road, Town of Middleton. I'm here to express, uh, that I am opposed to this, uh, resolution. I would greatly appreciate the council to take that into concern that the process does in fact need to be slowed down at this point. The other thing that I am bringing up today is an anecdote and a little bit of historical information, which I will give to the city. Uh, it is in regards to, uh, what has brought about mistrust of the populace and the population and the citizens in regards to this thing. It goes back to, I'm talking about under amendments, item number five, tonight's agenda, City Council, number five, John Minehold's farmland lease to crop land renewed two thousand seventeen at the November two thousand seventeen Airport Commission meeting. I was at the Airport Commission meeting in July eleventh, and I brought up, simply brought up the question that, and I approximately quote, "Has the Airport Commission prior to this date ever amended or modified any land use or land lease agreements between the airport and neighboring farmers and citizens?" At the meeting, I got a very gruff answer from the, from the chairman, saying this was not a commission item. It actually is a commission item. And number two, very clearly stated by the planning and by the committee, that of course, there was nothing that was ever done. I, next day, I got an email, which you have a chain on that, saying that, uh, from Mr. Opitz, saying that, again, he went through the files and found that there was no modifications. Uh, there was an email from com-- commission member, Ms. Richson, saying that in fact, to check the records, Mr. Opitz got back, in fact, checking the records, and in two thousand seventeen, the commission, or committee, I should, commission, I should say, uh, said they were shortening the timely frame lease because of the master plan process may identify a project that the city may wish to pursue prior to the term of the lease, which was a five-year lease to a three-year lease. This land is directly on the west end of their airport and can be used for only one thing, and that would be airport expansion. And then, this spring, we get the thing that the, uh, that none of this has been done, nothing is all up in the air. Again, what this is, is another anecdote, and now, and this item, which was brought up, that Mr. Opitz indicated that he had forgotten until now, conveniently or not, I have no idea, I'm sure he's very, he's a very honorable person. Anyway, it's another...
That's time.
...problem with transparency of the citizenship and the council, the city, and the process. I know, and you're gonna be voting on that tonight, too, and that, the only reason that was brought up was because of the questions asked by citizens.
Thank you, Steve. So, the next one is Andrew Bierwaltz. Andrew Bierwaltz. How do you pronounce it?
Bierwaltis.
Bierwaltis, okay.
I have no comments at this time.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. Next one is Joe Froyd. Joseph Froyd.
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Jessica Froyd. Okay. The next one is Catherine Wolf.
I live in the Town of Springfield, and I've been involved at the AMPAC level with the public comment. I'm not gonna read the prepared statement I had, because it's thoroughly been covered. I'm here to speak in opposition, um, hoping that you will vote down that amendment. But there are some really good reasons that people are as concerned as they are, and I think the, um, the group has been given a bad name because of the level, um, of concern that we do have legitimately. There has been a lack of transparency. We have been given misinformation. Um, the last time I testified, I gave my address, unfortunately, and on Sunday, my house was buzzed thirty-five times, right over the woods, right over my house. Uh, there are many people that won't speak because they're afraid of that kind of retribution. When I've brought this up, I was told that pilots don't have to file a, a flight plan. And so, we're sort of at the mercy of these, um, lead-based gasoline planes, um, that do pollute. And, uh, when they're flying that low, we have a six-acre greenway, um, that's the Town of Springfield's. Uh, we've had barred owls, uh, screech owls, which I won't miss, actually, um, and some, and quite a bit of wildlife in that six-acre greenway. wildlife in that six-acre greenway. There isn't an adequate environmental assessment being done. They're all gone, by the way, because of all the low-flying planes. But, okay, but I have been through master planning processes before and they have not been like this, where you have one plan that's developed and then citizens respond to that after that point. That's ineffective. When the Powell Marsh up in northern Wisconsin went through an extensive master planning process, it took 10 years because they did it first the way this is occurring. And there was such a citizen uproar that the whole process had to be done over again with scenarios laid out so that people would have an opportunity to respond to potential expansion, whatever the different things are that the airport is proposing. And without that, it's sort of an exercise in futility. This is my fourth meeting I've been to and it's very frustrating when you wonder, is this an exercise in futility? Does it matter what people say? Is this a done deal already? There are over 70 hangars already at Middleton Airport. When was a master planning process for that expansion? That's not regular maintenance and upkeep, as far as I know, and I'm not an expert. But we have some real concerns about the pollution, our loss of property value rights, and much more.
Okay, thank you so much, Catherine. And last, the next one is Julie Luefler. Julie.
Please take one of these. Yes, thank you. I think it'll make it easier. Sorry, can everybody hear me? Yes. Okay. My name is Julie Luefler. I'm the citizen Springfield representative to this committee. I have serious concerns about Resolution 2019-31 being discussed tonight because I think that resolution would detract from our ability to consider accurate and unbiased information in offering our advice to the City Council. At our first meeting and at later events as well, citizens have repeatedly brought up legitimate issues that they are concerned about in this process. Various government officials have publicly stated that the plan was not set in stone. As an example, Mark Opitz spoke to Channel 47 and stated, "We may end up with a master plan that doesn't recommend any changes to the airport." Additionally, at the open house, it was made clear repeatedly by city officials that citizens' concerns would be addressed fully during the AMPAC process in a transparent, even-handed manner, including the most frequently expressed concern by the majority, that the airport stay at its current size and level of activity. And it was told to these people repeatedly, even if it took longer timeline and if it required more meetings. Despite this, the resolution being discussed tonight resolves that although AMPAC members may suggest topics they feel should receive greater analysis, AMPAC is directed to adhere both to the scope of services and timeline agreed to between the city, the Bureau of Aeronautics, and Mead Hunt. The resolution directly contradicts the position of the city, which I've just outlined, to fully and transparently examine these issues during the AMPAC process. For example, in the contract, there is language about Mead Hunt's scope of services found in section eight of Attachment A, which I've handed out to you, which states that the contract assumes there will be certain feasible alternatives for development. Despite what the city has promised again and again, as far as I can tell, none of these alternatives in section eight contains an option that the airport remain in its current footprint. Because there is no such language, if AMPAC is directed to abide by this scope of services, then we, AMPAC, will be directly stopped from examining the pros and cons of a draft master plan that recommends, in the words of Mr. Opitz, "No changes to the airport." And again, this is in direct contradiction to the city's previous promises to the public of this possibility in the AMPAC process. There is language suggesting that the scope of services may be changed, but given the fact that the timeline this resolution requires only includes one or two more meetings, I'm not 100% sure about that, but they're very limited, it is extremely unlikely that such an amendment could be discussed or adopted. In addition, airport expansion issues are deeply complex and AMPAC members need accurate, unbiased information that should be considered, which we will not receive if this process is truncated by this resolution. Given the limitations of this resolution, I believe our advisory function will be harmed. I want to hear from everybody, including the city, including Mead Hunt, and including the public, who could be affected by these issues. If the city adopts this resolution, the public's trust and confidence in the fairness of this process will be broken and their genuine concerns may not be addressed fully. Therefore, I do request that the city vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next one is Jenny Paulonick.
I actually wrote an email to all of you that I was planning to read, but it pretty much echoes a lot of what's been said here tonight, so I'm asking just that you read it and take it into consideration. I do, I live in the town of Middleton, I'm not going to give my address. My house was being buzzed by a capital flight plane before I left to come here tonight. That activity's been increasing for people, several people who've been attending these meetings. It's harassment. It's not being regulated in any way or apparently not being, I don't know if you reported, if anything can be done about it. So a lot of us, I think, in the neighborhood would like any kind of planning process to take into account the expansion and increases in activity at the airport over the last 20 years before we talk about any kind of expansion. There's been a lot of changes, there's a lot of extra activity, there's a lot of extra noise in the neighborhood, and there's certain people involved in this process that are committed to making our life more miserable with their planes. And so, somehow that needs to be taken into consideration here. And definitely, we don't want to ask for more of that. So, obviously, I'm opposed to the AMPAC resolution that's on the agenda tonight and ask you to read my email as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Does anybody else want to speak? Not the second time, just those who have not spoken.
Mr. Mayor, could we let our chairperson speak again in lieu of, my husband's not going to speak tonight, Steve Spurling, he'll give his time to our chairperson. That is allowed.
Okay, go ahead.
That is allowed.
I have two more, Kyle Larson, I have two more additional comments. There are members of the AMPAC who are making these recommendations to you based on their own financial interests, as we've already discussed. It's also worth noting that many on the commission do not reside in Middleton or the surrounding communities. In fact, when Jade Holfelt's husband, Matt Holfelt, was interviewed by the Wannakee Tribune regarding his bid for a seat on the Town of Vienna's board, their article stated, quote, "Holfelt grew up in the town of Westport and attended Wannakee High School. He said he envisions development pressure in Vienna as the area continues to grow and believes that protecting the rural character and controlling new growth will be important." His quote, "We like it the way it is," he said about Vienna, "that's why we decided to live here and build our home here." One has to assume he shares this opinion with his wife. Well, we also believe that our rural character needs protection. It's why we chose to build our homes here, to grow our families here, and we like it this way. It seems as though the Holfels are perfectly content to work towards keeping the character of their home while working to expand their business at the expense of ours. And Mr. Fussard, a representative or a common council member, recently spoke at a Town of Springfield board meeting to express his concern and objection to the town not including the city of Middleton in its decision to expand the quarry within the town's borders. He noted that it's a decision that will have consequences for the entire area. We can all see the irony here. If you pass this resolution, you're refusing to consider the viewpoints and the effect of this airport expansion on surrounding communities. By limiting the AMPAC, the only place where the residents of Springfield and the Town of Middleton have representation in this matter, you are guilty of the same erroneous decision-making that he vehemently objected to. Please vote this resolution down and continue to have integrity.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wants to speak? Otherwise, I'm going to close this. Okay, go ahead. Please, you haven't spoken before, right? Okay. Identify yourself and you have three minutes.
My name's Eric Engen. I'm a resident town of Middleton, Metaro Circle. I just moved here, actually. And before I did so, I was concerned about the airport and the noise before I moved my family from out of state, so much so that I actually flew back to listen to the amount of noise that we would endure. And fortunately, that was a windy day and wasn't a lot of traffic and I went to talk to Mr. Maury and he showed me the noise abatement plan or the flight pass and where the flights generally would go. And that was where, the place I did see that day, generally went. Unfortunately, we moved in and we realized that it's tremendously noisy. There's jets that fly right over our house, they're well under 500 feet. And then, there's these planes that circle constantly, buzzing over our house in a circle, I'm assuming training flights. And it's very, you know, it's disheartening that we moved here. We love our house, we love our neighbors, we love our neighborhood, and everything about Middleton, except the noise. And I think we made a bad decision and this expansion that we're talking about is just very concerning to me and my family and I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Just for the record, what was your last name?
Engen, E-N-G-E-N.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else who may be remaining? Go ahead. Identify yourself and you have three minutes. You haven't spoken before, right?
I have not spoken before. My name is Reverend Joel Berant. I'm speaking towards the issue of Cross Lutheran Church. And I just once again wanted to kind of echo what was said before and the representation of the people who are here. Wanted to thank everybody for coming out in the city for giving us the opportunity to speak. We've been working through this process for multiple, multiple years and we've been stuck in different issues regarding water and sewer and septic and holding tanks and things that we've been trying to do, which would enable us to get into the community so that we could begin reaching the community, building the community, and serving the residents of the community. Ultimately, we see that our planting into this community in Bishop's Bay, in Middleton, would be something that would help the city, it would help the residents, also, it would help the church. We have a greater mission that we want to be able to do, to serve people in the name of the God that we love. But at the same time, we see this as a win-win for everyone. And so, we're asking for the city's help in finding a way to be able to build in an expediated timeline without being held up by water issues of sewer, septic, city and timeline, things that really we have no control over. We're asking for help and we're appealing to the City Council for opportunities and that we might not be able to reach on our own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. I think everybody has spoken now, so I'm going to close this part of the meeting now and we are going to move on to the presentation. And the first presentation is on the Middleton Youth Survey Youth Commission.
Good evening. I'll try to make this quick and straight to the point as I think the room wants to get to some resolutions. My name's Brad Cordes. I'm on the Commission on Youth and I wanted to thank the council for allowing us to speak In March of this year, we sent out a survey to the community through email addresses and social media. What we're trying to do is trying to identify the interest barriers and opportunities for this, sorry, for families in the city, to identify opportunities for Middleton and improve activities for youth that are offered in our city. It was open for a two-week period and it was separated out by responses from different, youth from different age groups according to their school level, which was younger than school age, elementary, middle, and high school. We were looking for areas where the commission could help facilitate change or identify barriers our community had to participating in activities or even to hear that people were okay with how things were going. There was a total of 681 surveys completed and I want to just go through some of the findings. I believe all of you have this in your packet. The slide, there's a demographic slide, basically, the respondents that was a basic fair representation of our current makeup for the city, from what I understand. What we learned specifically was that overwhelmingly, the respondents didn't know what activities were available to them. We also found out that more activities are wanted, but also recognize that the city and the rec department can't offer everything that people want. But I think it's good information to have as there might be some areas that the rec department can focus on their future activities when they're doing some planning. The most glaring finding was that parents need better awareness to information about program offerings and the preferred way to receive this information is through email and many of them through the city website as well. There's how citizens learned about the programs. Thank you. There's a heavy emphasis on email as well as website, but there's also the rec guide, which is coming out soon, and school flyers. The top barriers to participation are shown up there. So, hours, awareness, and to some extent, cost. So what was striking to us is that a 25% of the people in our community don't know what activities are offered. We're not really serving the community as fully as we could. Preferred times, as you can see, were after school or on weekend mornings.
So that's what you mean by hours? That means?
Correct. That's what people preferred for hours that offerings or programs were offered. There were youth with special needs at all levels of schooling, however, we did see an increasing number as the kids get older, but that also might be related to many high school students taking the survey and possibly self-identifying with a special need. Either way, it's an item that I think needs more focus in regards to how some of them are maybe able to participate in activities or special considerations they may need. Then we separated out a couple of groups here. There's the preschool activities. You'll see different activities that they participate in. These were the most common responses that were received. As you see on the bottom bullet points, the barriers to participation, they include not knowing what activities exist or programs are full. And then we move on to elementary through high school. We combined these because, for the most part, they had the same answers across the board, which was, I don't know if it was surprising, but it was interesting to see that elementary and high school students were asking for the same programs. So some of those were swimming, art, dance, very popular options that the rec department did offer, but the largest opportunities we saw were additions to the summer rec programs, gymnastics and skiing. High school youth identified that there's a large interest in part-time jobs, volunteer opportunities, as well as ACT and SAT prep programs, as well as internships. And we recognize that there is an internship program that's being offered and the numbers that we received that people were interested aren't really correlating with people who are signing up for these internships. The good thing is, we have somebody on our youth commission that helps manage that program, so we're devising ideas to help spread the word and get people involved in these opportunities if they so want.
So in this table, could you explain, you got the current and then you got the preference? That mean people who are waiting would want this? Is that?
Correct. The current is, this is what they are participating in, and the preference is, this is what I want to participate in the future. That's how we kind of separated them out to try to find out opportunities.
Is that that they're waiting for or they might not, they might just not know it's available?
Yes. We think many of them, they don't know it's available because they, we had some free text available in some of this and some of them said, "We want to participate in this," or "We want this to be offered in the future." And a lot of them are being offered and we don't think people know that they're being offered, or they're doing other activities at the same time and the hours conflict with what they want, so they're not able to make some of these things because they just happen at the same time. Key findings for this group is that the youth want STEM programs. That was a big satisfier that people want and is growing, as well as internships and part-time employment for our high school students, as I mentioned. Barriers are, once again, consistent across age groups with hours and knowledge of activities being the highest in this group. There was a split of people who wanted activities at the school or somewhere in the community. So what are our next steps? I'm here today speaking with you. I'm here today speaking with you and then next Tuesday, we're going to have some people speaking at the school board meeting. We also plan to write an article for the Times Tribune. And we want to do that to help report out to the citizens who answered the survey so that they know something was done, items were collected and we've considered their opinions. We also are discussing opportunities with the rec department that they can offer different programs or activities in the future. And then in 2021, the commission is designing a more in-depth tailored survey to be sent out, try to answer some of the questions that we, that came out of here. Our ask for the council is to issue a letter to the school board on our behalf, supporting us and recommending that they allow more space in the schools after school hours and weekend activities. We're also recommending that a new webpage be developed specifically for activities occurring in the Middleton for our youth. It's very difficult to find information and the calendar for the city and the website is completely blank for the year. So when, if people go there, they might not be able to find the opportunities that they're looking for. And I think that might be one of the barriers that people just don't know what's out there. I think there's, might be an opportunity to clean up the email process. If some of us have been there, it's quite cumbersome. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for someone to select all of them to be able to go in instead of individually go through a list of emails they want to receive. And also having a one-stop place for social media, instead of each department being their own separate entity and having to post their own things. I think there, we feel that there needs to be a dedicated resource from the city that works on the website and social media because it is quite the task for each individual department to keep up their own information. And it's what we saw when we were digging through that it's very difficult to find things. And, you know, if, in today's culture, if you go online and you can't find things easily, you're just not going to get the information. You're gonna, people are going to give up. And we want people to be able to get the information when they look, have the emails coming out regularly, knowing how to do that. And we don't think we're reaching as many people as what need to be reached. And the other thing is, we found out through this process that there's a visitmiddleton.com site. We suggest eliminating that or combining with the city of Middleton website because there's duplicate of information right now. And I don't think a lot of people know possibly where to get information. And you go to one site and just stuff isn't there and you go to another and it looks like a great, fantastic site. And I know there's some cost prohibitive, prohibited measures with doing the other website through the Visit Middleton in the tourist department. But I think there's an opportunity for some of those resources to be combined. And then there's also a suggestion for elders to promote activities when they talk to constituents, newsletters, any group sessions that they may hold. Is there any questions?
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
You are working on, you know, doing some of these things?
Yeah, we're currently working on some of these things and we hope to have more in the future.
Okay, okay, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is staff on the flood recovery update.
Go first if you want. Good evening. I'm going to make this as quick as I possibly can in sake of time. We were asked to do an update on flood recovery. And my piece of this is just for people looking for information. We've had a LTE staff member work with us on developing an easy site to identify all of the flood-related projects that are ongoing. And it is linked on the city's website under Conservancy Lands. It was the easiest place for me to put it. I'll work with IT to try and get that more on the front page of the site. But it's an ARC GIS story, so it's interactive, the plans for the different projects as you go through. For the sake of time and the speed of this computer, I'm not going to go through it, but encourage you to take a look at it online. If you have any questions, to let the appropriate staff person know and for the public to be aware that the site is up and, and available for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was quick. Thank you, Matt.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'll also be brief in interest of, of time tonight, but also included in the council packet is both a memo and a sheet providing an update on the financial information related to flood recovery. Just sharing a couple of numbers very briefly. When the city went through the damage assessment following the flooding, we identified an estimate of about six and a half million dollars of public sector damage. Most of that was water control and stormwater related, about five million, about 1.3 million in other damages. We are now at the point where we have submitted information to FEMA on all of those damage assessment areas. FEMA has divided them up into 14 projects in various categories. Five of those 14 projects have gone all the way through the FEMA process to where they've obligated funds. We don't have payment yet, but that means that it's gone through all the approval process and that based on the size of the project, as work is complete, we're able to apply for, for those funds. That's about $422,000 that has been obligated. They've obligated the smaller projects first. On the other projects, we're going through and they're doing their various levels of reviews, including environmental, insurance, various different things that they need to look at. We're still responding to questions. That's going to be an ongoing process and as we design and bid projects, we're submitting that information to FEMA and will continue working with, through that process with them. Be happy to answer any questions, but at this point, just wanted to hit the highlights. The information's in the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Melville? He has done a remarkable job and we want to say thank you.
Getting updates on this?
Pardon me?
We keep getting some updates on this as it's going forward because...
Yes, yes. Mel, you heard?
There's a lot here that we need to be updated on as we choose and make decisions on funding.
So it's good that we're getting $422,273 in near future, so. Thank you, Mel, again. So, all right, now on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Would move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Will you go to the judge first or which one do you want? How about the judge? There are a lot of people on the judge. Okay, there are a lot of people over here waiting for the airport resolutions. I'm going to go to the resolutions. And there's the resolution number 12931 Airport Master Planning Process. So this is the council president, Ramsey.
I would move adoption.
I, I would second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to just make the observation that I believe that it's not in the scope of the AMPAC committee authority to spend money for a community survey as much as people would like it. It is not something that is, is the committee's choice to do, if I'm correct. It isn't...
Well, this is an advisory committee and presumably like any other advisory group, it would submit requests to its supervisory body, in this case, the Airport Commission and the Common Council. And it would be up to them whether to approve a survey at any particular time requested by the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
So Larry, you're saying that if we pass this resolution, we would not be limiting the AMPAC committee in terms of public input?
No.
We would just be guaranteeing that there will be a final public hearing at the end of the process.
As there must be, yes.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I do have some comments I wrote down. So, so this has been a very contentious process and I want to say thank you to Mead and Hunt, city staff, Airport Commission, AMPAC, airport hangar owners, and above all, all the citizens of Middleton, town of Springfield, others for their input. Yeah, this is the democracy in action. I do have some concerns here. I have the concern about the data collection process which was used. There are some positives and others aren't. So I am pleased that Mead and Hunt did this, went through the Polco, collected the data from airport users. They did an excellent job and I want to say thank you to Mead and Hunt. After this, it's interesting to note that someone chose to get input using monkeys away from 1,270 airplane, airplane owners in seven states, including Wisconsin. And I really wonder why the airplane owners in six states are more important than our own citizens. So what's remarkable is that we haven't get to survey our own citizens living right here, right now, whose lives airport will impact both positively and negatively every single day. And not only that, there's a huge opposition to getting our own citizens input as if they really don't count. And I'm really opposed to that. So the plan is to have a rough draft of the master plan before surveying our own citizens. Why would we not want to have these data before we spend too much time and money on this? My other concern is about the role of AMPAC. Certainly, it's an advisory committee just for the airport master plan. Most city committees are advisory as well to the city council and they do make decisions. If not, why are they there? I'm, I'm concerned about there's a wording in the resolution that, that this AMPAC cannot make the decisions. If we went through the process of appointing this committee, they should have, just like other, all other committees should have the authority to provide input and make decisions. So the resolution 2931 states AMPAC does not have any decision-making authority. And I wonder why do we have it then? We went to great length to ensure we have all the stakeholders on this committee. We have from Fasen Branch Conservancy, we have from, from town of Middleton, we have from the town of Springfield and of course, we got the, we have nearly all group represented here. And I do know that there's a lot of friction in this committee and I would wish that they will all learn to get along because we have some very important things to do here and we can't, we have to trust each other and we have to get some things done. So now, you know, I was to, I did go to one of the committee meetings last time. I stayed for one, one hour. So at least in that one hour, when I stayed, I thought some things were getting done. But I do hear that there's a lot of talk, talk, talk and, you know, just saying things about other people. I think it is about time. It is an important project. We are spending $250,000. We all have to get along and get things done. So this is the plan for next 20 years. And there is a statement here say it is a plan for next 20 years without significantly changing the mix of small aircraft currently using the airport. It will be interesting to see that how do we define significantly? And it may vary a lot from one resident and one airplane owner too, and it's a different viewpoint. And I would ask Larry at some stage that whatever we do, that we actually define what is significant. So the other thing which I want to point out is that all the people on AMPAC, they have some conflict in one way or the other. So we can't really start saying this has a conflict, that has a conflict. So you all represent one group or the other. So, so when it comes to voting, I would expect that some people, when you're voting on a particular item, you can recuse yourself and one would expect that, that they would. So, so, so I think, you know, we shouldn't really be going too much after that. And again, let's work together and let's get things done and let's not start putting each other down. I think we have important things to do and working together will make it easier.
I have a question, Gertie. The, the folks who, people believe have a conflict of interest, are they all from the city of Middleton?
Well, as I said, that every person on the committee in some form or the other has a conflict of interest. So because they are presenting a particular group, for example, one person representing Fasen Branch Conservancy.
I understand.
And that you would think that there's a conflict.
Let me rephrase. Are the pilots all from the city of Middleton?
The pilots are probably from those who are at the airport. They're from all over, I would imagine, so.
They're all from Monarchy.
Well, no, I wouldn't say...
So Leif is from...
No, 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 that's not the...
He's a resident?
No, the Maury Airport, Maury runs the airport. He's our operational manager there. And then we have the special operations group called that one or the other plane, what is that?
The reason I'm bringing this up is if we're going to count out all of the pilots on certain critical votes and if perchance, they're all from Middleton, we happen to own this airport, the city owns this airport. If, if they're all counted out of a vote, it's our airport.
Oh, absolutely. No, we are not...
That doesn't make any sense. We're paying all this money. Springfield, with all due respect, the townships are not putting in all of this money for this research. And if we're going to count our residents out of a vote when we're putting in the money, that doesn't make any sense.
I'm not saying that to count anyone, anyone out. I'm saying that if they want to recuse themselves, I have no problem. And the person who is representing the, Kevin Munson, he's the pilot representing the Airport Commission, so.
A resident of Middleton Hills.
He's a resident of Middleton. So I'm not asking, I'm just, if somebody feels that when there's a vote on a particular issue, rather than fighting and talking, yelling at each other, let's give them an opportunity and let's respect that they will, they will honor themselves rather than anybody, you know, asking them that they shouldn't be there or any of that. So that's what I'm really saying. I think we have to respect each other and...
Yeah.
Respect what they say and do.
Okay. I have also one more request to have folks respect Mark Opitz and to not assume that he has a secret agenda or any kind of, you know, he doesn't have any plan that he's not giving up. He's done lots of hard work and I'd like to commend him on this project.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Emily.
So in hearing all of your comments, I appreciate hearing the feedback. And I want to share that I've heard from eight constituents in my district. One person was against it, against the resolution tonight. Seven were for it. Those are my constituents. And I'm sharing that because there was feedback about us not asking the public. But I want you to know that we do, or at least I do. I also want you to know that I'm gravely concerned about this buzzing concept. And I'm gravely concerned about the 500 feet, which I assume is an FAA requirement. And I ask that the airport remind... and I ask that the airport remind our flyers in, whether there's, whether there are constituents or from elsewhere, to abide by and respect the rules of the airport.
And I fully endorse what Emily has said, that if there are people buzzing city or whatever authority we have, this should not happen, and I don't know what is the five hundred?
I I I'm on the Airport Commission, I can speak to that, um, the five hundred feet is a minimum limit for when you're up in the air doing, you know, actual flying, obviously you cannot always stay above five hundred feet or you cannot land or take off, so...
Right.
As people approach the airport for a landing and similarly when they're taking off, that five hundred feet does not apply, it's 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 like when you're going into a circling pattern above the airport waiting for a turn to come down and and land, obviously you can't just like go, you kinda have to wait your turn, and that's where this five hundred feet minimum limit is, is you're not supposed to um, you know, be circling at, you know, a hundred and twenty feet or something, that would be uh, that would be a problem, and 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 we do have a a call-in line at the airport that gets regularly used where people do complain that people were flying too low, and um and that's all recorded and and um, um, you know, and sometimes what we find is that the airports that are called in are from, you know, Mori Air Airfield, Middleton, and sometimes they're actually fighter pilots and stuff like that that get called in and when, you know, you check the flight patterns and you say, oh, that's not a plane coming in here at all, but people hear it, and so they kind of assume I heard it and it's, I live near the airport, so there are concerns, but we need to track all that and we are tracking all that, so I do recommend that if people are getting buzzed, uh we we need to take that seriously and I wanna know more about that as well and um make sure that we do not have any type of hazing or whatever.
Is there a telephone number for them to call?
Uh, I I believe there is, but I couldn't tell you right this moment.
Do you want me to look it up while you talk?
Yes, you have a fantastic computer in front of you.
So that is really a concern, that there were at least three people who mentioned that and there may be other, but uh that's absolutely unacceptable, that should never happen, and if it is happening, it should be somehow penalized.
I don't think it's penalized.
No, well, we can't, it it's, excuse me, we...
I'd like to call the question if we're going to...
Excuse me, we have the public input and this is not the public input now, excuse me, please.
Who's gonna take care of this?
Okay, so, we had the public input, please, it's uh, you know, let's respect the process, okay? Okay, excuse me, please.
I will be done, I just want that on the record, it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the BOA, it's not the city of Middleton paying for it, we all deserve a voice in that public life.
Okay, does anybody else has any other questions or comments?
I'm gonna make one quick comment, the resolution I believe is pretty much self-explanatory, the one thing the resolution deals with is strictly the master plan process, it doesn't make any uh mention or commitment towards or anything to do with expansion, it's, and that is a a common thread that we've heard tonight, this resolution deals with master plan process.
We have one meeting left.
Excuse me, could you please, if you speak again, I will have to ask to leave, so, thank you, yeah, go ahead, anybody, anyone else? So so I did already pointed out there are a few things which I'm concerned with, doesn't have any decision-making authority, number one, and significantly, and maybe I will work with Larry that somehow we address those issues, so, okay, so the motion is approved, the resolution number twenty nineteen thirty-one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we are on to item number...
Church.
Mr. Mayor, can you bring up the...
The church?
Recommendations, one, please.
Recommendation one.
Recommendations, one, please.
Okay, so, we are on to the recommendation and proposals, this is the item number one, the concept review for church in the community of Bishop Bay, Cross Lutheran Church, Arkon Road.
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Okay.
Second.
Any motion is to defer, are there any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, what what are you deferring to?
There's potentially a new information that has come come available and we haven't had the opportunity to take a look at it.
Okay, so to a next meeting then, not to another committee?
No, to another meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? The motion is to defer item number one under recommendation and proposals, which is the concept review for the church and the community of Bishop Bay, and the reason for deferment is there's some new information available which we need to consider, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, okay. Okay, we are on to agreements, item number one, amendment number two, to agreement with Field Buffer for design engineering services for downhill drives, sanitation pond, repair of flood damage, this is the grant application services, and I hear this is the motion to defer.
I'm gonna move that we refer this to Stormwater Utility as they had not had an opportunity to weigh in on it.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to defer this to, refer it to the Stormwater Utility Board, any questions or comments? Any question or comments, all those in favor of this motion to refer to Stormwater Utility Board say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes, all right, the next one is uh agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for Design Engineering Services for World Road Construction, this is one of the worst road now after Maywood Avenue, so...
Motion to approve uh the agreement.
Second.
Okay, second, any questions or comments? You guys should probably walk around there for it's done, so it is, it's awful, so, okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, Emily, I know Middleton Beach Road needs work too, I agree with you, it's it's coming up soon, so...
Good news is, lots of other roads have been fixed, so, we'll take our time.
I agree with you, the roads are getting better, so, so, item number three, amendment number one, joint funding agreement with United States Department of Interior, US Geological Survey for Water Sources Investigation Study One Fifty, and they are paying the money, we are not paying...
Who who was recommended by finance?
We are not adding any penny, so...
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to let the USC Geological Services pay more money say aye.
Aye. And thank you to them, by the way.
Passes unanimously, say thank you to them, yes, okay, all right, agreement with the non and associates, not Han, non and associates, he has been working for us for quite a while, or he has been doing projects for us for quite a while, for design engineering services for illicit discharge detection moni- monitoring.
Move approvals recommended by Water Resources and Finance?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments, seem like a good thing to do, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, uh, under agreements, item number five, amendment number two, to farmland lease where John Mine holds.
Move approvals recommended by Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just the comment that this is just cleanup.
Yes.
That this is, this needed to be done and it, we're just cleaning it up.
Wonderful, thank you.
He's been performing all along.
Absolutely.
Yes, Robert, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, item number six, letter of intent for the purchase of for twenty-four thirteen and twenty-four seventeen, Parliament Street, Middleton, Wisconsin, Conservancy Bend Residences LLC.
Move approvals recommended by Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? They are paying five hundred dollar upfront and then there's a four-month waiting period, Larry, you feel comfortable with this?
Um, at at Finance, we added um that it would be subject to uh final attorney review, uh so I'm assuming that's part of the motion here, but uh, and because we're we're working on the main documents, at the same time we're working on the those, this letter of intent.
So that's part of the motion, right?
Finance motion was, uh, will subject to final city attorney...
Okay, well, I think I'm gonna talk to, you know, Bill later, that uh in our minutes, they should really specify whatever it is because people can go and cross and rock, cross-reference what is in the Finance Committee minutes, so, so we're gonna have, start improving our minutes here, so, but I will talk to...
Let me amend the motion, I'll I'll move approval as recommended by Finance, which states that it will be subject to city, final city attorney approval.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, licenses, review of an application to mend the agent for the alcohol beverage license held by Imperial Enterprises doing business as Imperial Garden Two Zero Three Nine Allen Boulevard.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, item number two, review of an application to mend the agent for the alcohol beverage license held by Quick Trip Incorporated, Six Five One Ninth Century Avenue, Two Point Spencer and Straight of Madison, Wisconsin as agent.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes, we already did the recommendation and proposals, we already did the resolution number one, we are on to resolution number two, this is twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, mending the twenty nineteen general fund budget to fully fund five and EMS capital reserve targets.
Move approval is recommended by Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously, now the next one is need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we are convening into closed session and let's uh...